All right, uh, call the meeting of the Deerfield School Committee to order at 6:05 PM. Uh, the first item on the agenda is review and approve the minutes from January 5th, 2022. Motion to approve.
Second that.
All right. All right, financial statements and warrants, Shelley.
Hello, I shared out the expense reports through January 31st. I'm happy to take questions if you have them. I do have a couple of things that I wanna just share with you. No concerns to report, I'm not worried about the budget at this point. Um, but I did wanna give you an update on the fee line. So before we do that, I will just make the warrants known for the record. Um, eight warrants were signed electronically totaling $107,782. Um, and then if you look at the reports, you'll notice, uh, there's a significant amount left in the budget remaining, for the year, and that is because we are still working on payroll. Brenda has been making progress, um, but that transition over into the new system takes a lot of work. Um, entering individual employees, entering individual positions, entering all the funding sources. So that's still work in progress. So the salaries are not presenting, um, as they will. And my hope is that by the March meeting, we'll be a little bit closer. Uh, so that's the note there. And then there's two lines, um, that I wanted to talk about that are over budget. And then I can answer any other questions that you might have if, if something comes up. But you will notice on, uh, I believe it's page five of the report, under, um, function code 4220 for facilities. Uh, the buildings' general repairs line is over budget. Um, there have been some additional HVAC repairs and other things that have had to be done at the school this year that has already pushed us over. Uh, I'm not concerned about that number, you know, breaking the budget, because we do have savings from other lines, for example. Um, we have had some personnel changes throughout the year, uh, and there's actually still a vacant position that Tina has not yet been able to fill. So, um, I know she's still working on that and it might get filled, but it won't be the full salary for the year. Um, so that'll allow us to recoup where there's some overages. Uh, the other major item that I wanted to talk about is transportation, which falls on, I believe, page, uh, four of the report, under 3,300. Uh, currently, the transportation line is not over budget, um, but we are gonna see that change for two reasons. One is, uh, there was a run, uh, going to a particular route, uh, for Eagle Brook pickup that required a larger vehicle this year because of the number of students in Deerfield from Eagle Brook on that run. And so we've had to change from a suburban, which has been used for quite some time up there, to, um, a bus. And so that is coming with some additional cost. So Darius and I just negotiated with Gribco what that cost would be, and we are gonna be paying an extra $71 per day. That is not budgeted, but again, I'm not concerned about being able to cover it. Uh, we will have funds from other expense lines that will be under budget. So that's the first piece. And then the second piece is, the contract with Gribco has a cost of living adjustment built into it. This is the first year of, we're in year three of the contract this year. It's the first year of the contract that the COLA is coming into play. What we do is look at the CPI, um, inflation rate over two years. And in prior years, it's been so low that the adjustment actually would have been a negative COLA. Um, so we just call that a wash when that happens. But in the current year, um, we're looking at 5.9 for FY '21 and, uh, FY '20, or I'm sorry, calendar year, because it goes January to December. Um, for '20 was, uh, 1.4, I believe. We're looking at a 4.5% cost of living adjustment that is owed to Gribco on the contract. Uh, and that is split amongst five schools. So, you know, Deerfield's not eating the full amount of that adjustment, but that is something that we're gonna see come into play, um, now that those numbers are in and we'll make the adjustments from March through the re- rest of the year to make sure that they're fully paid for their contract. So those are just a couple of pieces coming up. I just wanted to make you aware of, again, not concerned about the overall budget number at the end of the year at this point, um, but did wanna bring that to your attention. And I'm happy to take other questions if you have them. I did also share with you the revolving fund balances in, um, my very brief report. Um, happy to say that, you know, the idea that we put in place last year, or the system we put in place last year to use ESAR funds to help cover wages for early childhood and school lunch so that we could build up reserves this year, you know, that's really working out well for us. The projected balances in those two accounts will be healthy by year end, which means that next year, when that ESAR grant is no longer available, um, we can put those funds or those wages back on the revolving account. So that's good news there. Things are in good shape, um, and we don't expect any major changes in those accounts going into the new year. Uh, I didn't give you projections for '23 yet on those because, uh, early childhood enrollment is still happening, so we're too far out to predict there what those numbers will look like, although I don't expect they're gonna change significantly. And then, um, school lunch, there's a chance that it could remain universally free. That is what's being pushed right now. Uh, if that's the case and rates remain the same for reimbursement, we'll continue to be in a good spot in our school lunch program. If the USDA decides not to extend that universal free lunches, we would go back to students paying, and then anyone who qualifies for free and reduced would still get free and reduced lunch. Uh, so that'll dramatically change what school lunch looks like, and I imagine change also what our revenue looks like. So I'm not prepared yet. It feels too early in February to be talking about what those accounts look like, but I do feel confident that we will at least have enough reserves from this year to cover what we need to for next year's savings and be able to continue working on building that back up. So I'm happy to take questions if you have them. And then we'll finish, um, or continue the budget discussion later on in the agenda.
Just a quick question on the, uh, oh, I'm sorry if I am jumping ahead, but I think I just heard you talking about the transportation budget and increases that are occurring to it?
Right, for the current year.
Okay, cuz, cuz I just, a quick glance at the budget we're discussing later and the transportation is the same? In, from this year to next year?
So I didn't change the number for next year because we don't know what'll happen with that flex vehicle, for one. There could be less students. I'm not sure if those students are in sixth grade and it's gonna tip the scale and, you know, that bus route could go back down. Uh, and then we also, you know, we don't typically build in for the COLA cuz we don't know what that's gonna be. We could throw in a, a 3% as a placeholder. Um, but at the same time, we're almost over inflating in a year where there isn't a COLA and we're falsifying the numbers. Um, and we typically have savings from other accounts or we could dip into school choice if we had to, to cover that overage. So I have not changed it for next year. I'm happy to do so if the committee felt like we wanted to do that to be safe. You know, we could throw in a buffer in there. It just, it's historically not what's been done. We definitely could talk about that.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions on the current year? And then we can continue the '23 conversation when it comes up again.
All right, um, if there's, oh, Ken, I think you're unmute. Welcome, Ken.
Yes, so, my apologies for being late. Shall I just take a, um, now I've lost track of what my question was after I muted myself so efficiently. Um, oh, the, uh, there's an MOA that needs to be signed, and you just talked about a, a couple of things that have happened with transportation. That MOA doesn't apply to the, um, the issues you just talked about, does it?
That MOA is, is exactly what I'm talking about. So the $71 a day charge that we're going to see, the MOA, is just for the current year so that there's an agreement between, um, the school and the company, Gribco, that we're gonna pay that $71 a day for the vehicle change from the flex bus to a regular school bus.
Okay, and, and again, my apologies for being late, but do you require, did a vote get taken on that or did you want to have a vote taken on it?
Um, Darius, I don't know what-
Just authorize me to sign the MOA.
The MOA.
It's a good, it's a good point. It probably should be voted on to be signed.
Okay, yeah, yes. So I'd, I'd make a motion to authorize the chairman to sign, uh, the MOA with Gribco Transportation regarding the change to a bus from the flex vehicle.
I could pull up the actual MOA if anyone wants to look at it quickly on the screen. I'm happy to share and, and have you just read it real quick if, if needed, but if not, that's fine.
Why don't you drop it in the chat? That way they can look at it. Apologies for not having it as part of your packet. Was yesterday's, it was yesterday's work, but-
Yeah, I mean, I just happened to see the correspondence today on the MOA, and I was thinking it had something to do with what's been going on previously, but we've already signed that one, so, um, MOA. Flex to bus.
Should we also just, to be thorough, just throw out a number that this, this, uh, this impacts us? It's $71 a day for the rest of the school year? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, it's actually retroactively to the beginning of the school year cuz they made the change, and I actually, Darius and I weren't even really aware of it when it happened. Um, so we're going back, it's 180 days, so we're looking at $12,780. And I just put the link to the MOA in the chat.
And we're hoping it's just getting paid by, um, surpluses in other parts of the budget as opposed to being taken from school choice by the end of the year?
Exactly, that'll, that'll be our first, uh, step. So I've asked accounts payable to pay it from the same general fund line, um, believing that we're gonna have savings from other accounts. And if not, at the end of the year, we'll have to talk about transferring things over to school choice. But I don't believe that's gonna be an issue.
Okay, sounds good.
So Carrie, Carrie, you can continue to chair, I don't, I was like, so.
Um, so if there's no further discussion on that, um, Ken made the motion, I second it. If we're ready to vote, um, we'll call vote. Ken?
Yes.
Carrie, yes, David?
Yes.
Uh, Mary?
Yes.
And Erica?
Yes.
Uh, great. And before I move on, I realized I'd never took a vote on approving the minutes from last time. We motioned it and seconded it, and then I moved right on. So if we can back that, I'll take a vote on that now. Um, Ken, you weren't here. But we went over the-
I wrote them. Unless you amended them, I wrote them, I'm happy to vote, so.
All right, Ken, yes. Uh, Carrie, yes? David?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And Erica?
Yes.
All right. All right, uh, principals report, Tina? Do you have anything for us?
I have a few things. Um, so we just finished a week of RTI, or Response to Intervention in data meetings. And this is a place where we kinda discuss classroom growth. We review data and focus on stalled learning or slowly progressing students, um, high achieving or low achieving. Um, and in this space, educators are able to collaborate with their grade level colleagues and strategize and brainstorm new focus areas. These meetings allow us to have a good pulse on the building to see where kids are and their learning progress and to, um, focus our resources more equitably. So kudos to the, all the grade level teams for going through those meetings with us. Um, and past planning is in full swing. It's really hard to believe we're at that time again, but we've got our schedules drafted and, um, we're eyeing training. And shortly, students will be practicing on the practice nights. Um, and I, just a shout out to Lori Roach and Kristen Robinson for helping out with, uh, planning. And, um, we finished our, um, MLK school-wide events with thanks in large part to Jen Smith. Jen, can you please stand up? I'm only kidding. Um, we celebrated so many numerous activities that Jen was a large part of, um, offering to the entire school. The DLT, the Diversity Leadership Team, purchased everyone a picture book for a school-wide read aloud and educators, um, they read Be a King and they use a provided teacher's guide to facilitate conversation. Um, students also took part in a skin tone project where they mixed the same colors to make different skin tones. Uh, they generated art to, uh, capture the different quotes from civil rights activists, among many other things. So again, thanks Jen and the Diversity Leadership Team. Um, on that same note, we had our second diversity after-school club and, um, the theme centered around Martin Luther, Martin Luther King, um, and creating a more inclusive environment here at Deerfield. Um, you know, thank you, we're so grateful to our, to Lisa Gill or Lori Roach, Jen Smith, and Giselle Richardson for providing this rich after-school option for students to continue to learn and grow while, while strengthening our community. And Lori Conlin, Lori Conlin is actually leading the group. Uh, and this is gonna get a little complicated. Second grade celebrated Tuesday on Wednesday. So it was 2, 2, 2022. So the second graders, um, all had special T-shirts and they participated in Tuesday's activities like double facts and symmetry, uh, compound words. It was too much fun. Um, and today, Happy Hundredth Day. We are so excited about this. It's gonna be the Hundredth Day again tomorrow. Thanks, Darius.
Thank you, Tina. Uh, next up is public comment. I, Ken, have you heard of any public comment?
Um, I'm sorry, I was in Boston all day. I don't think I saw anything from Donna come through.
We're gonna, Jen Smith would like to do a little comment.
Oh, Jen, I'm sorry.
Listening. Um, hi, everyone. I, uh, I'm coming you, uh, coming to you tonight to just, uh, give another announcement about, um, the second session of our Community Dialogue Series that began back in November. Uh, we started this idea of bringing our communities together around the education of our young people and a greater understanding of each other. Frontier Regional School District, the Town Libraries, and the Deerfield Inclusion Group worked together this summer to plan a community education series called Community Dialogue: Coming Together Around Culturally Responsive Education. This series is going to be continuing this February 17th, and then we'll have two more sessions on March 24th and April 28th. We worked together with Sapphire DeJong and Tom Chang from the Collaborative for Education, who will be facilitating the workshops. The three remaining workshops are titled, the next one coming up in February is Culturally Responsive Education: Hopes and Concerns, and then in March, Digging Deeper with Connected Conversations, and ending in April with Where Do We Go From Here? We encourage people to sign up for the remaining three workshops. The idea of these workshops is to make a space for people from across the district to come together to learn how to have dialogues about our common values and to understand how culturally and historically responsive teaching can embrace all learners and teach from multiple perspectives. We're so thankful that there are so many active community members who care so much about what their kids, students are learning and who want to understand what's happening in the classrooms. When we come together in conversation and stay open to learning about shared values and our common goals for our students, we can choose to be a stronger community for our children and for our, each other. People would need to go to the Tilton Library website where they can register for, um, the Community Dialogue Series. Again, it, the second session is on February 17th, starting at 6:30 PM. I sincerely hope you will join the conversation and learn, learn alongside other community members so you can be more informed as you make policies for our schools. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Jennifer, thanks for sharing that. It's nice to know that work's being done in our community. Um, was there anyone else on the meeting who wanted to speak? Okay, seeing no one, um, moving on to unfinished business, COVID-19 update.
Um, I don't have anything real formal here. We did do a change, uh, I guess a good time to ask questions on the information that I sent out to all, all of you regarding that change from, um, following the state's change, recommended change to go from a, um, providing at-home tests for families. Um, and we stopped doing test and stay in the building and, and did, but instead it provided additional tests. Um, we'll still be, continue to pool testing on Mondays, um, and systematic testing during the day. But this is kind of moving some of the responsibility off the school and putting it into families as we're kind of reaching another stage of the pandemic. So, um, really, is there, is there questions regarding any of that, what's going on? Without going to the period details.
I'm curious how many families you have signing up? Is it equivalent to who was in the pool testing?
You know, we have that number, Darius, cuz, um, I just got asked that question. We have 262 students registered out of 311, so we're at 86%. Um, and we have 62 staff members signed up already, and that's just the first round. We're still getting, um, you know, registrations are trickling in.
Great. I just was wondering if you're, do you have a date already for when you're doing a second, uh, enrollment for that or, um, I guess that's the question.
Yep, so, um, if you enrolled by last Friday, the distribution is coming out next week, and it's, I believe it's February 8th. I just sent something out. I, I'll have to double check, Erica, I'll get that to you. But I feel like it's February 8th for the next round of distribution.
Yeah, I just figured it would be great to know if there was a plan already in, in place. That's great, thank you.
So basically, it's every two weeks that we have to, we have to submit on a Wednesday for the Friday order, something of that, something of that nature. Um, and what they do, they stay staggered to start faculty and then students, and then they're gonna put their orders together eventually, um, head to supply and demand.
So I guess I have one other sort of follow-up is that in, when you talked about, um, how it will, uh, how, how can you, how do you see it helping? Like what, are there particular things that are, that are going to be, um, alleviated for the staff? Cuz it does seem like it's a, you know, it's a big responsibility for trac- tracing or like, how, how is it helping, um, flow in, uh, dealing with COVID at school?
I'll start, then TD you can jump in as to the particulars and the color to the, uh, Deerfield. But basically, right now, um, so where we were months ago was that, you know, we knew through contact tracing in the community and the school, where the majority, we had pretty good confidence of where the cases were in the community. Okay, and, um, you know, I could safely come on and say like, you know, this is where we have any cases we have and so on and so forth. And you, I think we were pretty accurate, um, with that. Into December and the state started shifting away from doing contact tracing in the community, Deerfield did get a grant to continue it, but it's not continued in the same way that it was being done, let's say, back in October, um, where they're not following down with each contact and then tracing out. They're really putting, they're, they're connecting with someone who is, um, COVID positive and telling them to reach out to their close contacts and helping them if they need help in that area. But it's not where it was before where they were tracing out to everyone. So we've reached a point where we don't know where COVID is in the community. At the same time, we had a blow-up of cases in the community, um, with the Omicron, you know, surge that we just, I'm, I'll say with, well, not on whether we are now, I would say we're through it based on how quickly it's dropped off and even in the Deerfield, um, you know, we only had two cases this week compared to where we're in double digits just a few weeks ago. Um, so the idea that, you know, we no longer are tracing that way. Um, also, we were doing test and stay, and of the test and stay, when we did the last report of it, we did 1,131 tests and only found four positive cases. And so it just was showing that statistically, it was not an effective screening mechanism. Um, and we also, statistically, the number of close contacts that became infected was, was extremely low as well. So we weren't even, by finding close contacts in the, in school and in classrooms and such, just wasn't proving to be anything but really telling people to be vigilant, then not be vigilant. And we were not seeing that that was actually provided. By being able to give tests mid-week, um, it's the second test now available. And Desi actually just came out yesterday and said, oh, please use the, you can also tell families and we're gonna have to informate, get this information out. Um, if you're not feeling well, use the test. Don't even have to wait for the testing day that you signed up for. So we're gonna have to educate families on it. The problem is there's so much information, and I think families are saturated. And it's probably, some of you may feel the same way, um, with this. So it's kind of, that's why I think some of the signup isn't like, if people really understood, we're just asking you to sign up so we can give you tests to send home so that you can use them. You know what I mean? When, you know, when you see fit. I think people, you know, we've been sending so much information about COVID over and over. I think people are, you know, so we're gonna have to probably do it a few times to get people to understand, um, you know, what we're trying to do. I think, you know, it's setting the stage for the off-ramp or the, um, endemic game that we'll be, we'll be going towards soon. Um, I think you'll see, um, as these numbers come down. The numbers are also gonna come down because the amount of cases that are out there that aren't being reported are also coming down. Not gonna be, you know, faking the statistics there in the sense that if you're, you know, right now, if you aren't feeling well and you do a test at home as an adult and not affiliated with the school, and you have a positive, you're not telling anybody. You know, especially if you're, um, not feeling, you know, you know, many people are vaccinated, they're having mild symptoms. Um, and so if you're not, you know, if you're feeling, you know, just got a runny nose and a slight cough and a couple of days later you feel well, you're not checking in with a doctor and, or, or having things that are putting your data into Maven, which is the, the software that's tracking the amount of cases that pass through. So we're gonna see that, that number drop even lower because it's becoming an endemic, which is basically a normalization of, um, of a disease that is kind of normalized within society. It's not a spike or out of control. So that will allow us to, at some point, talk about, you know, where we, how do we change our policies? You know, people are, you know, the questions out there, well, when are masks coming off? And that will happen in stages as well, the spring, and you guys obviously have a hand in that since we have a policy on masks. Um, but, you know, families having more control of, you know, if they are positive and being well-tracked themselves is gonna be a big factor in that. Additionally, we've had quite a few cases overall, and that brings that number down too. So, um, so anyway, we hope that that's the trajectory of this and that we can say that there is a, uh, normalization. I don't think, like you said, COVID's not gonna go away. It'll be that, one of those flus that will continue around for a while, but it won't be something that paralyzes the school as this once did. That's the hope, anyway. Not gonna, works with it, yes. Other questions on, anything?
I'm just, I'm just curious, I don't wanna take a huge amount of time, raise a huge issue, but I'm just curious what the, uh, discussion is about vaccine mandates for schools and whether you've heard of any of that in your sort of superintendent circles around the state? Whether any cities or municipalities are doing that?
So the, for students and staff?
For kids, kids to go to school in the district, just like we have other required-
I mean, that would have to come, so there are districts that started talking that way, um, and then ran into real legal problems very quickly cuz there are mandated vaccines that are required by the state. And if the state wants this vaccine to be required, then they should go through the process. They did, you know, other vaccines that were required to attend school. And so I think the school districts that started going that route and having conversations at school committee about doing that, started getting legal advice that they would not win in legal battle because of the other, because of how the other vaccines that are mandated are treated. Um, there are some districts that did require staff to get vaccinated, um, and put in, and then put in obstacles for the staff. Not as, as hard-aligned as, you know, you've seen some of the, like, you know, state police or something where you were fired, um, but putting in, you know, obstacles to have them to test on their own at weekly and doing some other things and that. I haven't, I have no real interest in going that route. Um, one, we have such a high level of vaccination rate, and two, um, I think, you know, that we've seen the last surge, it's not, it's not a selective, um, although it's, the question is, how far do you overstep on as an employer to say, this is what you need to do to stay healthy? I mean, I think everybody should be vaccinated. Um, I mean, statistically, it shows that it's a beneficial thing, but, you know, I didn't think that was a battle that we needed to take on in the middle, like, given that it was such a low number of our faculty and staff that was vaccinated, so.
So it sounds like, and you're saying is, there is no sort of hodgepodge district by district movement that if it comes, it's gonna be coming from the statewide, based on the-
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know of any district that has done any requirement of vaccination, um, certainly not in Western Mass. Um, and then, you know, the week, you know, there was also, but yeah, I can't think of any that have done it. So, um, it'll be interesting to, it'll be interesting to see what the off-ramp, they call it, you know, the, months ago, they were calling it the off-ramp of what the removal of masks and that kind of thing did. You know, cuz they, they were talking about 80% vaccination- That kind of thing did, you know, because they were talking about eighty percent vaccination rates. They're not gonna get that statewide. So I think you're gonna see a change of course on policy on that. Um, I don't think we're, we're close to eighty percent. Um, in many of our buildings, I don't think we are close to eighty percent in many of our buildings. Um, maybe that will change, but maybe it won't. Um, but so I think you're gonna see a new kind of rollout. Um, because they're just not gonna get that and especially not gonna get it in the larger urban districts where their vaccination rates are far lower. Um, and then. I have worries about it, about creating segregation in your own building. If you're gonna require those who aren't vaccinated to wear masks and how is that gonna be least? And that's not very healthy for children at all. And you you really got to show the evidence that. For for children that 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 those vaccinations are are making a huge difference. I mean, it certainly makes a huge difference. Um, I think certainly elderly and those who are vulnerable, but I I haven't seen that in my own research and that kind of thing, seen it making a huge difference among. Um, kids, but maybe it is and. You know, as the surge went through, we haven't had many, um, you know, kids had complicated issues. Maybe it's because they were vaccinated, you know, it's hard to correlate. I'll let the experts do that.
Thanks.
All right. So um, Darius, was there anything else for the COVID updates? Everybody cover it? We've got sidetracked.
They did postpone tomorrow's vaccination clinic. Um, so please see the push out information for those details because I don't have it in front of me.
All right. Thank you. Uh, next up, we have the capital improvement plan update.
Um, yes, I don't have any, I don't have any new information. I don't imagine, Darius, you do either. Um, we haven't met, the capital planning committee has not met, so we haven't had the chance to discuss. Discuss the topics that we're, you know, we've sort of had on the back burner. So as soon as we've met, I will provide an update.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you. All right. Next up, new business. We have the fiscal year twenty-three budget proposal discussion.
I'm just gonna share my screen. So this is just a reminder here of what the first draft uh, came in at when we met last month. We were looking at a five point two-three percent increase. Uh, which did include some new initiatives of the new faculty position. Uh, there was an increase for OT, which is an existing position, but bringing that up to full time. Uh, we also had, um, what other new things were on here? The part-time nurse position, we were moving up to full time. And then the other pieces were things that were just being rolled into the budget because of existing expenses. The technology piece was not new initiatives. Um, we're just looking to properly fund and fully fund existing. Um, contracts that we already have for software and network support. Um, and then the employee separation costs as well were in there. So. Uh, we had talked about what the possible increase or decreases could be. Um. Tina and Darius and I met and did make some changes. So in the new draft. Uh, we are looking at a three point oh nine percent increase currently. Um, the steps that we took to get there was just elimination of those new initiatives. So we moved the full-time faculty position. Um. Decreased the OT back to the point four FTE from the one FTE and we reduced the LPN back to part-time. Um, the LPN was a decision that actually came up. Like, right the day that we were meeting and I hadn't pulled that out yet. So that piece is something that is not. Um, at the moment, very impactful to the school. We will have the full-time nurse and then. Um, one part-time position as well, but the other two pieces, you know, the the need is still there for that additional faculty position that Tina talked about last time, as well as the additional OT support. But we understand that there has to be some changes um, and in order to bring the budget down, this is what we started with for reductions. Any questions about that decision or those decisions? Okay, so I guess at this point, um, what we're looking at is some direction from the committee as far as the next steps in this decision-making process of where we go with the budget. And we have time. There doesn't have to be decisions made tonight. I, Deerfield, I don't believe Darius has requested that we present to them, right? Their finance committee and select board is not asking for that, so. We imagine they'll come to our public hearing as they usually do, uh, which I believe will be with the March meeting.
Yes, I believe we have a member listening in, Julie. Julie Shelfond is on this evening, I think, I see.
Great.
She had inquired, so.
So typically, the way that it works is at the March meeting, we would have the public hearing first, and then we would go into the school committee meeting and. Discuss or vote on the budget if we were ready to move it through without any changes. Uh, so if we want to be prepared for that same timeline in March, uh, we need some guidance on where we want the number to go. So do we go in with a three point oh nine percent increase as we presented here? Which is essentially level service for everything else. Um, and then those changes that I mentioned above, which again are not new initiatives. Um, just things that we need to fully fund in the budget that haven't been fully funded in previous years. Um, or do we start talking about additional ways to reduce the budget? So, um, you know, I'm happy to throw some ideas out there based on what Darius and Tina and I have talked about. Um, but would love to hear from all of you where you're thinking that target number should be.
I'll just chime in if I could. So um, I mean, I I don't see a problem with this three percent as being a a good place uh, to be. Um, but are we moving, can we talk about priorities? Is this a good place to talk about that? I know we seemed to have stopped before we got to this um, subheader called further points of discussion.
Yeah, I mean, we can definitely get into those pieces uh, and talk about what the options are if we were to continue to reduce. So there are some uh, discussion points that Tina and Darius and I talked about. Uh, the first, oh, go ahead.
Um, okay, so I just wanted, well, I don't know that it's necessarily um. Reducing. I I think it's a, maybe a question of, if I'm reading this correctly, a question about priorities. And of course, priorities are where we lean on administration to tell us what priorities are. But it seems like an ob- obvious one. I shouldn't say obvious because I may be totally wrong, but um. You know, there there was, you know, there's clearly was an express need for this um. New faculty position and instructional coaching position that was discussed and still the need for that, and that's sort of gone away. But then somebody is clearly raising the issue of three teachers teaching forty kids in grade four. And so I'm just wondering, um. Is that, is is there somebody within the school who has the skills that that we would be looking for in that new instructional coaching position? Um, or would that, if we did lose a classroom, uh, would we not be reshuffling people? We'd actually be. Maybe losing a um, a teacher and hiring a different kind of teacher with different skills. Because that seems to be a budget, presumably somewhere in a budget neutral area, but would be a question about priorities.
Yeah, that that's a great question, and I'd love Tina to talk to that. As far as the um, losing someone, you know, if we were to make this change of actually reducing a teacher and eliminating a position. Without throwing in exactly what you're saying, David, and just kind of moving things around. Um, there is a placeholder in there for a teacher who retired, so we're not actually eliminating any staff members. I just want to make that known, that there is a vacant position that's in as a placeholder. You know, I think that's important as we have part of this conversation, that we're not talking about somebody losing their job if we were to make any of these shifts. Um, and then I will certainly let Tina talk about the piece, your other question there.
And I just gotta jump in. Tina has to be, uh, when you ask questions about, is there anybody qualified to move around and such, that kind of thing, it's, that can be, gets kind of close to that. You know, employee confidentiality and hiring processes and that kind of stuff. So I'm telling, I'm setting the stage for you, Tina, because I know you you kind of gave that look like, I.
All I was gonna say is that the way that it looks, that no one would lose their position when we, exactly what Shelley said, Shelley answered it the way I would. I mean, and don't forget, we have two sixth grade sections right now, and we were gonna, we have to move ahead with a third grade sesh- section because, I mean, a third and sixth grade section. So there is gonna be some shuffling anyways. That was, that was the piece. We wouldn't have to bring on a new sixth grade teacher. We would be doing some shuffling.
Okay. So.
Hold on, can I, I'm sorry, just.
Go ahead, Dan.
Just to clarify, this is a good mental exercise here. So are you saying, um? I I think I lost that. So when you talk about reducing classroom sections from three to two in grade four. Is that? Part of, like, one teach, so you get down, you got three, presumably three teachers going down to two. Are you saying that that opens up one teacher to take. A third, sixth grade section, or you're saying you've already got a open slot from somebody retiring? To to be the third or sixth grade teacher?
The first thing that you were talking about, so if, um, we would have to go ahead and hire another teacher for sixth grade because we have that bubble year. There's two classroom teachers there. Um, and we need to have three the following year. So if we consolidated, we would do a shuffle, we wouldn't have to um, hire another teacher for that. Position. We wouldn't need an additional faculty position. I think that's what Shelley's talking about with a place saver in the budget. Was that clear?
Um.
No?
Not really, no.
We're graduating a two-section sixth grade.
Right.
So it's out. So now the overall mass of number of three-section classes. Is going up because of the younger grade is coming in with three sections. So this, by reducing this section. We, in a sense, would be able to shift. People around because. So if I were graduating one two-section class, we're gonna be creating another two-section class in fourth grade.
So it's not a budget, it's not saving money to go from three to two fourth grade classes?
No, it is. I, Tina, I think we've already counted for that third, sixth grade class. So if we were, if we were to make this shift. And act, we'd actually be eliminating a faculty position and you'd still have the appropriate number of. Grade-level teachers.
Yes, but if I'm hearing it correctly, that faculty position we're eliminating is not presently filled. Correct? It's just a placeholder.
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if that helps you, David, or not, but. Our, our physical staffing does not, from this year, does not change going into next year. But we are, in essence, eliminating a position because we've been, we've had a placeholder in place, right?
I I guess to rephrase it, um. At three percent, and you put this further point of discussion thing, is it budget neutral? To drop from four, from three fourth grade classes and then have a slot to hire? This, this new instructional coaching position, which you have eliminated to get the three percent?
Yes.
That's why I'm talking about priorities.
Mm-hmm.
So so that's budget neutral?
Correct.
Okay, so what is the calculus then on whether or not to reduce? Three fourth grade classes to two or not?
And not hire than a a new teacher? The new position?
You said you, I thought you said you eliminated the instructional coaching position to get to. To um, the new three percent. Changes from the first draft, eliminated additional faculty position. Right?
Correct.
Okay. So if that was a priority. It seems like revenue, it's budget neutral to actually hire that person and not have three fourth grade classrooms.
That is correct. If the committee is comfortable with the number at three point oh nine percent.
Right, okay, correct. But, okay, but and and then is the committee getting involved in that discussion of the priorities of the building? Um, between the instructional coaching position and three fourth grade classrooms, or will you make, you have you already decided, or would you make that decision without our input?
Um.
It's, that's an excellent question. So. Talking about where where the school committee's role comes within, so the educational decision should be made by the administration, however you hold the funding sources to those decisions. So. You essentially. You play a hand in it because you you allow funding for those decisions to be made. You're saying, so we have to tell you what we're spending money on. You can say, let's say it came down between a choice of two things, you could say. You know, we're gonna leave that up to the administration. We're gonna need to fund the one faculty. You know what I mean? And then you guys can determine, you know, I mean, we're kind of looking at something similar to that in some way because. We don't know class sizes in the undergrades yet because we're waiting on enrollment changes to occur. So there's kind of like, you know, there's some of that kind of like. Understanding where your numbers are in the budget, but. We're gonna leave that decision to you. But when it goes to single positions and single increases. Then you do have, it turns into a role where you have a decision-making factor. But we don't just say new faculty member and you guys go, well, we trust you. We don't really, don't care what it's for. We just trust you need another one. But so instead, we have to say what it's for, so. Does that make sense?
I I guess so. I guess probably the committee is interested in hearing um, what the priority is.
Can I jump in? Um, just, it's related to this too. Uh, and I guess it's a bit of um. My own clar- need for clarification. The. Eliminated additional faculty position is what? It is that, it is the proposed, um, is it a, is it a? Teaching position or was it the the sort of, I remember you talking last time about a particular new. Um, like, inner, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna get the terminology right, but there was a special position you were trying to create. It sounded like, is that what's being eliminated or is it actually? Related specifically to this classroom shuffle, quote unquote. So that's, I, that, that's something, I'm wondering if they're actually, are we talking about parallel? That is, is this? Are they related? Are they, is it a cause and effect there? Um, because, yeah, my general question would be about looking at the the grade four and and its needs as well in terms of. Can it go down to two, you know, is is it going, is going down to two classrooms going to be, um, uh, you know? What's that going to, how's that going to squeeze that learning experience? Um, so that's another. Extra layer of it, but I think the first question I wanted to know is just, how does that additional faculty position or does that additional faculty position, position that's? Being eliminated of um, relate to the reduction of the classroom sections in grade four or the addition? Of the um, the need to 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 have a a third, sixth grade class?
So let me try to present it a different way. So FY twenty-two budget had twenty-two grade-level positions. To cover all of the classroom needs. FY twenty-three, we added in this new position. So let's say that makes it twenty-three in the first draft. We pulled out that twenty-third because financially it's difficult to fund another full-time teaching position. So the current draft at three point oh nine percent has twenty-two grade-level positions, same as this year. One of those is vacant from a retirement. We only need, if we reduce to two sections in grade four, twenty-one. Grade-level teachers. So what David is saying, essentially, if we wanted to go in at three point oh nine percent. That vacant position could be reallocated to fund the new position that Tina talked about as a priority in the first draft. And it wouldn't decrease the budget from three point oh nine. It also wouldn't increase us back up. So we could get that new position. If we were to keep in the vacant teacher position. The other option is to eliminate that position to further reduce the budget, and we do not also get. The new position that we talked about in the first draft.
Okay, so it does not affect, it has nothing. Am I re- reading this that it does nothing to do with needing to add the sixth grade class or reducing? And balancing it by reducing the fourth grade?
The extra sixth grade class is already accounted for in the twenty-one. Grade-level positions that we have in the budget.
And I also want to note that, so as we are developing this budget, Tina has also been working with her people, and I think. Here, you want to jump in? You, there is, we're looking at the the students' needs. Um, and as we start to re. And as we start to reconfigure some of these classrooms and this kind of stuff, there, I'm thinking, in my last conversation I had with Tina, was talking about possibly not going for that position and looking at other types of supports, like additional instructional assistance support to deal with some of the issues they're having in the lower grades. And so, Tina, if you're nodding, I should let you speak there.
I was going to answer David's question around priorities. Priorities would probably be smaller class sizes and then having some additional IA support. So Darius, you were spot on. After having conversations with faculty and staff and hearing their input and seeing some of the needs, we have some students coming in from early intervention too that we're going to be receiving that will look like will possibly need some support as well.
But, but is, if that's true, then you would, you would be really prioritizing certain grades for the, for the smaller class sizes? Because of the needs, right? The needs, I mean, you get needs come in different cohorts of kids. So, okay, yeah. I mean, I'm all for supporting that analysis of where the, the needs are. And, and I have no qualms supporting movements when, if, in other words, if the people moving into fourth grade need a lot of supports, then, then wonderful. They'll have 13, 14 kids in a classroom, and I suppose generally that's better. But if that's not the grade that is needing the resources, then maybe we should, then to fourth grades and moving some resources to the other grades, as you say, with additional IAs or whatever would be the way to go. Hey, the big picture is, it seems to me that at 3.09, you've got some additional resources to play with to drill down on where the support needs are, I guess.
Right, and we did have that exact conversation you're talking about. And because you're looking at, if you look at some of the lower grades, some of their enrollments are actually similar to grade four. But we want to keep, we want to keep those grades smaller to get the individual attention, especially for the learning, you know, the pandemic impact, I won't call it learning loss, but the pandemic impact it's had, especially in younger kids, you know, in crucial areas of, you know, pre-K, I mean, K in first grade, pre-K K in first grade. And so we actually made a conscious decision, say, okay, what, looking at the older grades, you know, the kids can do, you can do well in looking at the kids who are in the class with a slightly larger class. In fact, socially, it can also be beneficial. You start getting class sizes, you know, very low teens, a couple of kids are absent, you start having some, some interesting social dynamics in classes that small when those kids are ready socially to go bigger. So, yeah, we did look at that, and probably should explain to all that when we.
No, it's actually great to hear because I was also kind of leaning with the idea that, well, if you increase the size of a class, wouldn't you want more support for the teacher to navigate? But what you're saying about the, and, and having to sort of wrap my head around the fact that the older kids are the fourth, fifth, and sixth grades, and that the younger kids are the younger ones than that, that makes a lot of sense, how you're, you know, you're explaining that. So I appreciate that clarification or exposition.
Yeah, in hindsight, we could have drawn this up a little bit. I mean, I think we just kind of, we missed kind of early on, and it got confusing.
Well, I also, also think there's the question of, do we know if we're going to see any kind of return in enrollment next year? Now that we've been back, we will have been back a full year in, in-person instruction. You know, and we, we know we lost students last year to whatever. Our enrollments were down, our enrollments have remained down to a degree this year. And my concern would be making the jump right now, or making the decision right now with that fourth-grade class. If we pick up six or eight students, now all of a sudden you're at 23, 24, 25 kids in the classroom section, which is pushing the limits of where we've always wanted to not be. So I think if we have another month at 3.09% to sit and, and really talk this through further, Tina and Darius and, you know, the rest of the team and Shelley, it will, it will give a clearer picture. It might be that we, you know, go with two sections and maybe, as David was saying, bring in that, that position you were hoping, the coaching position that you were hoping to hire. Or it might be that we go with two sections and bring in the additional IA support. Or it might be that we just take the, take the step of eliminating the position and, and coming in with the, the lower requests. So personally, I think staying at the 3.09% for, you know, into March and really have the discussion at the public hearing in March, we're going to be in a good place. So I don't know how, know what other people think, but that's my thoughts.
Yeah, I agree with Ken. I'm, I'm okay with saying it 3.09. And it's been a lot of interesting conversation, but my takeaway is kind of, I feel like it's really a, the school's decision what happened with those positions. It's, I don't, as a committee, I don't, I don't want to be dictating what, what the best needs of the school are. It should be like a building, the one decision.
Yeah, similarly, I would just want to, you know, make, figure out the best way to keep, keep the staffing at the levels that are needed for the students. So, you know, what we can do to support that. So, yeah, I'm, I'm, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to start, I don't, I also don't feel ready to try. I don't think I would want to, even if it was time to do it, to try to reduce the number of, of teachers. So, yeah, I'm good with, especially if we have more, a little more time to think about it.
Yeah, I appreciate that direction moving forward. I, I think, you know, we try to approach this budget with, and we tried, we've done this across in the other schools as well, just trying to show transparency of where we're thinking about moving things around. And sometimes transparency, that kind of level, you know, where we show we have draft one, where we have dreams and, and other ideas, then we cut those things. Can go both ways, you know, it can go one way where, oh, well, we need to get you that. The other side is like, why did you show it to us if you didn't, if you're not fighting for it at this point? You know what I mean? And so I think we're, you know, Shelley and I are worried, not, are not worried. We're working on trying to, what level of transparency we just showed, so you can see where we're thinking. Instead of coming, because we could come in with a very more polished kind of finished product, but we want the committee to have a hand in seeing what's going on and, because it kind of gives you an idea of what we're thinking. So I guess we've got to kind of, you know, obviously, this conversation tonight, we have to iron some of that stuff out. But that was the idea, is to show transparency as we move stuff around.
I also think an additional month will give us a better feel for where the, maybe a better feel for where the town is headed. I don't know where Julie, if Julie wants to say anything. But $152,000 is, is, is a good portion of anything that I'm reasonably confident would be a good portion of anything that the finance committee is, you know, contemplating for an increase in, at the town level. So, or, you know, an ability. So it, it just gives us that one more month to look at things from all perspectives.
Any further thoughts or questions on the budget? If they're done, we can move on to reports. Committee Chair, Ken, do you have?
I have nothing.
All right, collaborative, Erica?
I just have a couple of notes. We didn't, we, we met on the 26th, and I do not believe I, we received, or, you know, a summary is that we usually get. So I just figured I'd say that, just two, two points that, that came up where that there was an election, there was a space open on the executive committee, and Irv Rhodes was elected to that position after, there were actually two people who were vying for that position. And so there was a, a vote for that. And also, we heard from Emily Hoffman from the Massachusetts migrant education program. And, you know, one of the things I kind of have really liked is that we get to hear about different programs. CES is sponsoring or working with people in the community. And so this was kind of a, a real, really informative presentation on, on kids in migrant families and/or migrants and migratory workers themselves, and how they are being supported in the school systems in the state. So really enjoyed learning about that. So that's really the main, main points. But when the report comes out, I will certainly forward it along to people. That's it.
Thanks, Erica. The hearing, reports and updates on what the collaborative is doing was one of my favorite points of being on the collaborative board. So glad you're going to be here. All right, superintendent's report?
I don't have one.
Okay, that's easy. All right, is there any need for executive session?
So if people want an update on negotiations, we could go to executive session to do that and then return to open session. If you want the update of where we're at, or Ken could just leave. Who came up? Accidentally. It's like, no, not me. But if you want, we can do that, we can do, we could, I could quickly just send you out a link to do that if you want an update there, or if you don't, then we can update you later.
I'll go with an update later unless there's something very pressing that's going to happen in the next month.
No, our next meeting is nine until March 3rd.
I defer to the chairwoman who is running this meeting.
Um, I feel, I've, as a member of the negotiating committee, I feel like I know the details. So I don't need an update. I'm, I'm okay. I think we can wait. There's nothing going to happen in the next month anyway. So wait until we have more news, and then we'll share it. That sounds all right with everyone? All right, and we have reached the end. I didn't catch that, Erica. I would take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, Ken has not returned. Carrie Echols, yes, David?
Yes, thanks.
Mary?
Yes.
And Erica?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Adjourned at 7:07 PM.